Check, check.
You're, you're.
Yeah, no, it sounds, it sounds a little better. Yeah, it was pretty. Yeah.
Yeah, the issue we had.
Everyone is cutting in and out.
Oh, you got a little, okay, that, here we go. That does sound a little better. I'm not hearing the reverb I was before. Thank you, Dave.
Can we hear from the people joining via Zoom if audio is better?
It's better for me.
Better for me also.
Okay, we're having some discussion about the, the electing the vice chair and I haven't heard anything from the people online. Was there some comments?
I, I wanted to second Jennifer. Or did Jennifer, was Jennifer, was anyone, did anyone? Suggest Jennifer?
I put myself up for it.
Okay, well, I, okay, well, then I'm there with it. It just, it was cutting out. I didn't hear it all, guys. I apologize.
Okay, so do we have a motion for Jennifer to be the vice chair?
I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So Nancy, the record, record will reflect the motion was passed?
Yes, motion was passed.
Thank you. You bet. That, that sounds better for me. I can actually get fairly close to it. Yeah.
I think mine is better, too. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, continuing on with new business, Madrid, Madrid, Madrid Gal Variance V dash two dash twenty-five. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this hearing of the Umatilla Planning Commission to order. A sign-up list is available for those who wish to testify. A person must testify either orally or in writing in order to be considered a part of the decision and have the opportunity to appeal. Copies of the applicable criteria are available from staff. The planning commission must base its decision on these criteria. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the plan or you land use regulations believed to be applicable to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with the statements or evidence sufficient to, to afford us or other interested parties an opportunity to respond to that issue may preclude appeal to the land use Board of, Board of Appeals on that issue. If new information is presented at the hearing, you may request a continuance to allow additional time to respond. You may also request that the record remain open. A request must be made while the record is still open. Procedures for the hearing in the order of the presentations are as follows. Number one, the staff will summarize the application. Number two, the applicant will present testimony. Number three, the public testimony in favor of the application. Number four, public testimony in opposition of the application. Number five, neutral testimony. Number six, rebuttal testimony from the applicant. Number seven, the record closes. Number eight is deliberation. And number nine, the planning commission will vote in, in, in the decision. That concludes the introduction. We will begin with the first business item on tonight's agenda. Is there a challenge to the jurisdiction of the Umatilla Planning Commission to hear on this matter? If so, please state the challenge at this time. Are there any conflicts of interest or personal bias to be declared by a commission member? If so, please state the bias or conflict at this time. Has there been any experte contacts regarding the upcoming, upcoming matter that a commission member needs to declare? If so, please state the experte contacts at this time. Could we have the staff report, please?
So the next application is variance V two twenty-five, which is a Madrigal variance. The applicant is asking for a variance because he's would like to make an addition to the home. And this is a home that was built in the seventies. So as we know that code changes over the years and is, it, it can vary in different zones. This particular zone is EFU, which is exclusive farm use, and this is a part of our urban growth boundary. So you might be wondering like, why does it have an address for Hermiston if we're here for the city of Umatilla? So the city of Umatilla and the county have in, is it an IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement, which means that in our urban growth areas, the city of Umatilla does a planning and the building goes through the state and other requirements. So the applicant submitted and we had a conversation with our previous community development director. And we do understand that although code changes and the home itself does not meet the setbacks, current setbacks, we understand that home was built in the seventies. That's, we're talking about almost fifty years ago. So this addition, they're requesting to stay fifteen feet within that setback. So the setback is twenty feet. So we're talking of a difference of five feet. And we looked through the plans and I spoke to fire just to make sure there were no issues with that request and there didn't seem to be any staff recommends approval. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Right now would be the perfect time.
This isn't a question, just to, because I'm not in opposition in any way, but if we set the precedence by doing this, Dave, does that set a precedence or is every case its own merit?
Thank you, Commissioner. The, each, each case is on its own. And so in the world of land use here, there really isn't necessarily a precedent that's set on individual properties this way. So we take them each one by one. The, sort of the point of a variance, that's when you get into issues of that sort of square peg round hole where it meets almost all the code, but a couple of things it can't, for whatever reasons. Oftentimes that has to do with the location of the property, odd shapes of the property, other facilities or properties that have been built around it, or sometimes in our cases out here, you may have adjoining wetlands or the river or something like that that might not allow it. So in this case, this setback is more than, if it was inside city limits, our minimum setback requirements is ten feet. In the UGB, it's twenty because that's the county code. UGB properties are eventually going to come into the city and theoretically. And so that's why I think what you're seeing here in the staff report and the findings is that aesthetically there, you aren't setting a precedent and it would meet, if it was inside city limits, would actually meet our requirement.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions? Is the applicant here to, to provide testimony? Public testimony in favor of the application? Public testimony in opposition of the application? Is there any neutral testimony?
You did ask if applicant, applicant is here and available to state information if you'd like or answer any questions you might have of the applicant.
I did, yes. I did ask. Oh, I'm sorry, my probably went too fast.
Can you hear me? Okay, any questions?
Just want to, just state your name and your address, if you would, please.
Name's Eduardo Madrigal. Address is three zero five two nine Bowdoin Main in Hermiston, Oregon. And, well, I'm just asking for the variance because, so before there was no, we didn't know where the property lines were at. And the houses, that property is kind of like really narrow and long. So there's a house right in the middle. And in order for me to keep my driveway to drive to the back of the house, I can't go further this way. So the addition has to be like just along the side of the wall where it currently is, pretty much. I think it's supposed to be twenty feet from the fence, but it's going to stay at fifteen. But they never knew that until I got a surveyed. So that, the issue was that I got it surveyed, but there's no closed building or anything that I saw.
Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. No questions?
Is there any testimony in opposition to that application? Is there any neutral testimony? Rebuttal testimony from the applicant? Probably not necessary. We, we're going to close the record. We, we need a motion for that.
I make a motion to close the record.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
State for the record that Commissioner Gutierrez has left this Zoom meeting.
I don't think she's feeling well.
So the task at hand. Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, at this point, it's time for deliberation. Is there any deliberation?
Pretty straightforward, yeah.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we accept Madrigal variance V dash two dash twenty-five.
I second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Dave, do you need my vote for a quorum for?
Yeah, do we have a quorum?
Don't you need four?
You have quorum, but you don't need the vote for.
I thought, I thought we had somebody leave the meeting.
Right, you're, so you're at quorum with four, so you still have four for your quorum.
Did, did somebody leave the meeting? We're down to three?
You had five and now you're down to four.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, the motion passes. The next order of new business is AAA replat RP dash two dash twenty-five. Could I have the staff report, please?
This next application is AAA Construction LLC replat RP two twenty-five. This applet, this, these properties are located in the R two multifamily residential zone. The applicant AAA Construction LLC is looking to combine lots one five seven three and one five seven four into one. So these lots were previously divided and the majority of the homes that have already been developed in that, in that area are townhomes. So there's smaller lots and the setbacks are a little bit different for townhomes. And this particular lot, the applicant is requesting to combine them. So they meet all of the minimum lot standards. We don't have any development standards because development hasn't been submitted with this application. It's a pretty straightforward application, just combining two lots.
Any questions? Is the applicant, is the applicant here to provide testimony? No testimony from the applicant? Testimony in opposition of the application? Neutral testimony? No rebuttal testimony necessary from the applicant? A motion to close the record?
I move we close the record.
I second.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any deliberation?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah? Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve AAA replat RP hyphen two hyphen two five.
I, I second. We both second.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to the next new business, six point four, Cheryl's Place Phase Four Subdivision, SUB dash two dash twenty-five. Staff report, please.
So this application is seventy-seven total lot subdivision. And this is in our R two zones and our multifamily residential as well. And this application is for seventy-six residential lots and one lot that is reserved for tele, telecommunications purposes. This property is actually a little distinct from other properties because at the southwest corner of this property, we have our water tower. So for the city of Umatilla. So because of where that water tower is located, it left us, it left the applicant with a little bit of, should I say puzzle pieces, puzzle pieces of how to arrange lots and how to make sure that the, the, the blocks themselves made sense for that development. So this application, we have what we don't usually have in subdivisions, usually subdivisions that are planned out, have streets and are pretty square in nature, rectangular in nature. For this one, we have, I believe, seven flag lots. I believe it's. We have, we have flag lots for this subdivision because of where that water tank is located. And at the end of, at that south, southern part of that subdivision is Radar Road. So that's where we meet our end. Also, because of, because of this one lot that is reserved for telecommunications purposes and that water tank, the blocks themselves are larger than, or the block, because it's one block, it's larger than eight hundred feet. So this is a project that I actually started asking questions about while Brandon was still here. You know, Brandon kind of knew that this application was coming, had already had conversations with the applicants and because I was new, you know, it was all pretty much fresh and, and all, all was kind of mysterious. So he did let me know ahead of time that this application was coming and why it was arranged a certain way because of that southern portion. With this subdivision application, the applicant seemed to answer all of the questions. We do extend one road all the way to the south of Radar Road and the homes to the south do connect through Radar Road. Does Planning Commission have any questions for staff?
No questions. I, I'm just going to mention that I have had some experience with Aaron and I've done some business with him, but it's not a bias for me and I'm not voting on this. But I will, I will mention that. Would the applicant like to present testimony? Okay. Is there any testimony in favor of the application? Any neutral testimony? Rebuttal testimony? A motion to close the hearing? A record?
I move.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, deliberation? Anybody? Oh, for roll call, yeah. Close the hearing, or record.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay, now to deliberation. Anybody have any contributing interest in, issues? I, I will say that, that this particular applicant has put most of the host, homes in on South Hill and they've done a fabulous job with all the streets and everything else. Their reputation is good.
Yeah, this is phase four, so you've done this a few times.
If there's no further deliberation, is there a motion?
I motion. I motion to, geez. I motion to pass, move what? Move to accept Cheryl's Place Phase Four Subdivision sub, sub to hyphen two hyphen two five.
Second.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So moving on to the next line of business would be the Commissioner Information and Discussion. I think that's why Dave's here, maybe. No? They usually have something that you lay on us.
I just came to see you all again, also just to publicly express, first of all, gratitude and appreciation for all the work that you're doing. We got, we keep you very, very busy. But on top of that, also just to express my confidence in our new community development director, we're very excited to have Zach here on board. He brings a lot of terrific planning and community development and economic development experience. And so he's already well-known in the region. A lot of the people we reach out to, even though a lot of that was in Washington, there are a lot of them here in Oregon and they all seem to know each other. And so we kind of have a little bit of a head start, which is great. And so anyway, just wanted to be here to support you, support staff and just be available again. Like I said, I try to be here at least once a quarter. I apologize that I wasn't so good at that last year. But back-to-back meetings, this is starting to be a habit, I guess.
Well, we appreciate it. It's great to see you and we appreciate your accolades and we're going to give them right back to you because there's a lot of things that you're doing that people don't, the trail stuff that you're working on, a lot of the things that go unseen. The, the footbridge is fantastic. Took a while. It looks great. Rock the Lox is moving forward. That was your vision six years ago. You know, and you got a lot, a lot of great things going for the city. So we, we appreciate being part of it, too, but you're kind of the catalyst to make it all happen. So we appreciate you as well. Any discussion items? No? No curiosity? You guys don't know when they're going to, you don't, you don't want to know when they're going to move the scale house up to the freeway? Not that kettle worms, not that kettle worms, huh? Okay.
Your dream is in hopes, right?
Okay.
Just don't have anything staff to have, two items? If commissioners don't have any, any items for discussion?
I, I, I tell you, I'd, I'd like to say this one thing for them. We have so many new people, you know, when I started, there was a class at La Grande I got to go to for a couple of days, told us about ethics and did a lot of procedures and the training. And they, they came here, I think DSL, dot DSL. Yeah, they came and did a class here in Umatilla. Is there anything in the, in the horizon that, that some of the new folks can participate in?
It's actually funny that, that you bring it up, Commissioner Kelly. But we've actually started conversations. And, and I think training is very important, especially when you have such an important job. Looking at these applications and looking at the code and seeing what applications do meet the code. We're actually in the works of trying to figure out training this year. And so again, we have a new community development director, but Nancy Sandoval and I have had conversations on what we can present to both our city manager, Dave Stockdale, and our community development director. So that we can plan out some sort of training for commissioners. I'm not exactly sure if we'll wait until we have all new commissioners or if we'll get something started. But that is something that we'll be looking into within the next few weeks.
Yeah, and I think I'd like to take the next month, when we reconvene in September, to see if we've got some options for training and just at least present a little bit to the commissioners on what could be ahead and, and what we could look forward to for training as well.
Yeah, when I, when I joined, was twenty twenty, so we were all meeting from, and Jacob just dropped off this huge binder that was like this thick at my house and just said, look at that and you'll be fine.
It would be advantageous to learn the nuts and bolts of this position, but also the liability issues are important. There's a couple of things we didn't find out our first year, like the, the annual thing you take online and if you don't take it, you could, there's a fine involved. And then you find out, oh, I'm supposed to do that. Maybe there's a top five bullet points about the things we, we shouldn't talk about away from a meeting and, and the things that, you know, just, just the personal liability things that are in this position that, that we might not be aware of until something happens.
Yep. As I was going to say, so some staff, even today, we just did a, participated in trading with the League of Oregon Cities. Apologize if we didn't forward that on to you. That certainly could have been made available to you. We can put onto your next agenda or any agenda thereafter, sort of staff provided. We can call mini trainings if you want. So there's information that are, that's available from the League of Oregon Cities that touches on some of the stuff that you talked about. Oregon Government Ethics Commission Training, General Land Use Planning, those kinds of things and information is there. The form you're talking about, there's the SEI Form, which is the Statement of Economic Impact that everyone on the Planning Commission has to fill out each year. Which is, if you don't have that filled out by, I believe it's April fifteenth, like tax day, you can get fined and penalized personally for that and the city doesn't reimburse you for that. So we can go through that information for you, but then we can, at the very least, we can provide you links and references and information. What you're talking about, Ms. Cooper, was a, usually we do like orientation packet that we have available. And you're right, we usually just say, here's the orientation packet, let us know if you have any questions, but we can maybe as a course of action, just put an item on it as a discussion item and take ten minutes or so at your, each of your meetings or go through that one by one if we'd like. Over time, you'd sort of, over the course of a year or eighteen months, you'd probably go through all of it. And then every legislative session, there's always updates, either a House bill or Senate bill that becomes codified. That's updates. We can provide you that information, too.
Yeah, that'd, that'd be great. Sounds, that sounds perfect. Any other discussion items? Okay, I think we're probably ready to call it a wrap.
That's still have a few.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Oh, yep. So the council did not make a decision on appointing new commi, commissioners. So this will be presented at the next council meeting? Next, next, so. So for the September sixteenth City Council meeting. So I just wanted to update the commissioners on that.
How many candidates do you have?
We had three this last round. The mayor proposed two candidates and then that was voted down. So we're going to continue the search and really, you know, kind of re-review that on September sixteen.
Let, let me ask you, there was a gal at the bank that was interested, but she's a part-time employee for the city at the golf course, some weekends. If she works for the city, is that a conflict in interest to be on a committee? Good to know. Thank you.
And the last item that I have to discuss with Planning Commission is meetings for the remainder of the year. So we do have an important meeting coming up in September. If we receive other applications, any to be presented to Planning Commission, we will add those. If we receive them by the end of this week, they will probably make it out to the September Planning Commission. So far, we don't have any applications to present, but we do have our EOA to present to the Planning Commission. October is another month that if we do receive applications, we can have that meeting. But November and December are days before the holidays. And I know that last year. And I know that last year, those meetings were, should I say canceled or?
We didn't really even plan one for December, I don't think.
Yes.
And you canceled. Yeah, so last year you moved your planning commission meeting a week earlier, but Thursday. So whatever that is, four days earlier, five days earlier, and then your December meeting, you canceled.
I think it was subject to, we didn't have much on the agenda, so we just canceled. But the other one, we had some things to discuss, so we just have to see what's coming up that month.
Well, you, you have your economic opportunity analysis coming up going before City Council, that's come before you already. You also have, the planning commission has an annual report due to the council. And at the moment, on paper, your reports are, your rules say that it's due in October. But generally, we've actually pushed that to November because we had Rock the Locks in October and staff wasn't able to do a lot of work on that. And so we pushed it. So we probably, I would recommend that you update your policy to be November so that we can comply with what we've historically done. But so staff will probably bring you a draft of that at your October meeting so that you can hopefully make a recommendation to bring that to the city council to present. And typically, that's been presented by the chair of the planning commission.
Is that a motion we can make right now to move it to November or is there a process for that?
Yeah, this is just your rule or rules of decorum. You can, you can change that now if you'd like.
Do you guys, you guys fall, you're picking up what he's putting down, yeah? Should we move it?
Absolutely.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we move the planning commission report to City Council to November.
I second that.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks for that heads up, Dave. Any further business? Is it happy hour? All right. I don't have my gavel, but oh, here we go. We're going to adjourn them, thank you very much, folks.
Need a vote, we need a vote to adjourn the meeting?
No, no, that's, I was asking if there was something else.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Need a motion. Jones first, yes.
Yeah, did I, oh, did I do it with someone else? I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, it's fine, we got you. We got you, Carol. So Commissioner Leon Tejeda? Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.
Bye, everybody.